Good evening. This special board meeting of the Board of Trustees of Socorro ISD is being called to order on March 30th, 2021. The time is 5:31. If you will all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll get right to it. Item number three, new business, A. Consider approval of purchasing cooperative for furniture at Socorro High School. Mr. Garcia.
Hello? Hello? It's on, okay. There we go. It's the age, that's what it is. President Nahara, Superintendent Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. My name is Samuel Garcia, Director of Purchasing. Agenda item three, A, requesting approval to utilize cooperative contracts so that we can start phase one to outfitting Socorro High School for $800,000.
I have a motion by Mr. Gondeta and a second by Mr. Morales. Is there any further discussion? I do, Mr. Garcia.
Yes, ma'am.
It states on the agenda for $800,000, but on the actual board agenda item, it states $900,000.
Correct, and I apologize for that. That was my error when I notified the superintendent's office. So our initial discussions for phase one, to make sure that we get in the production line for this phase, is $800,000.
So it's $800,000.
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Someone?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Item three, B, consider approval or request for increase for college preparatory materials and services. Mr. Garcia.
Solicitation E1950 was approved back June 2019. Since then, our program has grown, and so we're getting ready to issue a transaction for over $350,000. And so we're asking permission for up to $500,000 to accommodate this new increase that we've seen an increase in our testing fees, and also for getting ready to set up training sessions in the summer if, for those campuses or schools that need this. So currently, our limit is $600,000. Our current POs were about $550,000, so we're pretty close to that limit. And so now that Dr. Starkey is able to provide funding for Mr. Clark and Mrs. Croce's area, we've determined that the next transaction will be about $350,000.
Okay. Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Gondeta. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Oh, where'd he go? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you very much.
And item four, board workshop, A, budget presentation. Mr. Ressa.
President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. One of the main responsibilities of a board member is to review and adopt the budget and set the tax rate. And with that requirement in mind, we'll continue in our series of workshops for the purpose of adopting the budget for the 2122 fiscal year. We have there is the agenda that we're going to be going over. We'll talk about the current legislative budget status for the state of Texas. We'll look at legislative bills of interest. We'll look at current funding, federal funding updates. We'll look at the 2122 general fund revenue estimates. We'll look where we are on our general fund, the cost drivers currently, and where we stand with the budget. We'll look at the general pay increases for all job classes, for all funds, at various percentage increases, and this is for the board's information. And we'll discuss the April 13th budget workshop agenda. So where does the budget, where does the budget, the state currently stands with respect to their budget? As you can see, general revenue spending in both the House and Senate budgets are at $120 billion. According to the Comptroller Hager, there's $113 billion in general revenue that's available. So currently, they're about $7 billion short of what they need. And by statute, the state has to adopt a balanced budget. So what tools do they have to reduce the shortfall? They can certainly tap into the rainy day fund. There's $11.6 billion currently available. They can certainly delay the August payment to school districts. That's that last month of the next biennium, and in so doing, that would reduce their expenditures by $2 billion. Or they can certainly access what we call ESTER II, the Carissa funds. The state is, currently has $5.5 billion and supplant the budget. Or they can use a combination of these things. But obviously, the state is looking to be able to make sure that they reduce their budget by $7 billion or make some adjustments. Now, what about legislative budgets or bills of interest? And this is something I usually provide the board every time the legislature's in session. The first bill I want to discuss is House Bill 1525 by Huberty. This is the cleanup bill to clean up House Bill Three from the prior legislative session. It's meant, it's meant to clear up any consequences that weren't foreseen and so forth. First thing they want to do is certainly ensure that compensation delivered through the teacher incentive allotment is TRS-eligible. It wasn't before. It would also codify the use of the highest funding weight in compensatory education for those students that are homeless. It solves a problem related to small school districts when overall funding decreases when they add students to the CTE program. And they're doing this by adjusting the ADA for enrollment. It eliminates the district's ability to charge tuition for transfer students. It certainly would add students who go on to get an associate's degree within a specific time of graduation to the CCMR outcome bonus allotment. It also requires TA to do a review of those districts who've done a tax swap. In other words, where they've lowered the INS tax rate to generate M&amp;O funding and then be able to pay the debt. They're not exactly happy about that. And so what they want to do is that this bill would certainly ask TA to review those school districts and see if they could come up with corrective actions on that. So the companion Senate bill is Senate Bill 1536 by Taylor. This bill's going to get approved. Confidence is high, it's going to get approved. It's just in what manner it's going to get approved. And some of these items may or may not be in whatever is approved. Other legislative bills of interest is House Bill 1246 in Ojosa. It reduces the average daily attendance with average daily enrollment. Companion bill is Senate Bill 728 by Lucio. There's also House Bill 3445 by Huberty. It establishes standards by which, what they would consider excess fund balance by school districts and prescribes options where the school district would have to reduce that amount and so forth. So this is things of interest. House Bill 1080 by 18. Yes, ma'am.
I was told about this House Bill 3445, that they did list three to four options, but that if a school district does not take those options, that their state funding could be withheld.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, and I think there's some opposition to this bill, obviously, because you've got school districts with higher fund balance. I believe that that fund balance also pertains to days of cash. What I think is, I think we would be okay if it gets adopted, but it's something that we'll keep our eye on and so forth. Now, we did, you know, we have a pretty progressive fund balance policy. Our fund balance policy, if it's a certain number of days, we move forward to use those fund balances. So I think this is in line with what this district with this board has approved through the approving of the fund balance policy.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. House Bill 1018 requires a governing board of an open enrollment charter school to hold an open enrollment meeting, meeting with the geographical area served by that school and to broadcast the open meeting in the internet. So we'll see if that happens. House Bill 35 by Swanson, this is an interesting bill. I don't know if it's going to happen, but it states that the bond election has no effect unless more than 25% of the registered voters turn out. It also moves all bond elections to November and prohibits the moving voting locations. Again, I'm not sure if this is going to get some traction, but it's something that we ought to keep an eye on, so to speak. Then finally, House Bill 749 Middleton, this bill would prohibit all political subdivisions from contracting with registered lobbyists or belonging to an association who hires or contract with registered lobbyists like Tasby, like TASSA, like. So it's an interesting, there is a companion bill, Senate Bill 234 by Hall. So, Mrs. Nahara.
If I may, Mr. Ressa, this House Bill 749 does need to be watched very closely. If you can contact your state legislatures about this bill, this is, and this is not only would it affect local school districts, it's towns and cities, municipalities that, like us, who have jobs, well, not me, sorry. But, you know, school boards can't afford to send someone to Austin to sit on these bills to testify about them, to let our legislators know what harm they would cause. Now, if we're perfectly honest, Socorro could, we're big enough, we could send somebody. But you think about San Elly and Dell City, they can't afford to send someone to Austin to fight this bill. And a keynote on this bill, charter schools are exempt from this.
Wow.
Of course they are.
Yes, and so we need to do anything we can to fight against this bill. It was introduced the last legislative session, was voted down, but we need to keep an eye on this and talk to our legislators about voting this down. This would damage not only school districts, but across the state.
Well said.
Sorry, Mr. Ressa, thank you.
Well said. So let's look at our federal funding updates. So we have, we've got Carissa II, so Tasbo, Texas Association of School Business Officials, provided some information about ESTER I, which was received back by the school district back in, last year in 2020, and ESTER II. Keep in mind that Texas received, is, received $5.5 billion in the ESTER II funding, what they call Carissa. So they're sitting on that right now. The legislature's debating about that. Now, Tasbo put down, said, look, Socorro ISD received $10.1 million in CARES I funding. We did receive that, but I want to remind the board that the state did a corresponding decrease in our state funding last year. So it wasn't supplement, it was, you know, reduced there. Now, they also did an analysis. They said, look, what if the state kept half of CARES II and gave half to the school districts using Title I and allocation? What you see there is Socorro ISD would get $21.8 million if they did that. If they went ahead and the state said, you know, we're just going to give all this money in CARES II to Socorro ISD, we were eligible, estimated to receive $43.6 million. That's money that's right now the legislature is looking at, considering as they're doing, going over these bills and going over the budget. Then we have President Biden's $1.9 trillion American Rescue Plan of 2021, what I'm referring to as ESTER III. It's also called the ARPA. Texas is projected to get $12.4 billion of this legislation. Funds reportedly would go to reducing class sizes to accommodate social distancing, improving ventilation, hiring more janitors, and providing additional personal protection. So it's significant. Also in this bill, as amended by the Senate, the bill includes an additional $2.6 billion in state special education grants under the Ideas with Disability Education Act, IDEA, for the fiscal year. Also included is $200 million in special education preschool grants and $250 million for infants and toddlers with disabilities. There's also $7 billion in emergency aid for the federal E-Rate program, and school districts must reserve at least 20% of the funding to address learning loss due to the pandemic. Okay? Now, when we look at ESTER III, keep in mind that the information suggested there's a modified maintenance of effort requirement for this particular piece of legislation. And so the state of Texas is studying those requirements. Part of that legislation, I believe, says that this funding cannot be used to reduce tax rates. And so as you know, House Bill Three, a major component of House Bill Three is to reduce the M&amp;O tax rate. So the state is studying this. Now, on Monday of last week, the committee members of the Finance Committee meeting asked me, when are we going to know about these federal fundings? When do we, when will we know for sure? And I told them May, because that's when the legislature ends. Now, in seeing some of the Senate committee meetings and House committee meetings, I'm not exactly sure if that's going to happen, because there is some discussion about whether the legislature might adopt their budget without addressing ESTER III. And might either set up a committee to discuss what they're going to do with it, or might certainly consult the governor. I mean, but what you have here is Raise Your Hand Texas did have information about what the Region 19 school districts would, they estimate, be receiving out of ESTER III. And as you can see, I'm sorry, Socorro High School, under ESTER II would get $43.6 million, that's what they're estimating, and under ESTER III, $98.2 million.
Mr. Mena?
Tony, why is there such a big difference in school districts? El Paso is getting twice as much as we are. There are only about 7,000 students hired.
You know, Mr. Mena, I need to double check that, because ordinarily, usually what's happened is they use Title I allocations based on economic disadvantaged number of students as a basis for determining this. But when you look at some of the other school districts, I don't think that's necessarily the case, because there's a couple of school districts that ordinarily would get more money out of Title I than we do, and they've got a lot less money than we're getting. So let me see if I can find that information out, Mr. Mena, and maybe the next meeting I can provide that, or maybe through the Friday packet, because we are, we're getting the second highest allotment after El Paso ISD.
Dr. Espinoza, how big is El Paso ISD? How many more students do they have?
Our school district, we have about 46,000 students. I'd say EPISD, that's a low 50s. They're trending down, though.
Yeah.
They're trending down.
Yeah, so they're like 3,000 students behind.
Why are y'all looking at me?
Oh, you're, oh, I forgot, you were there.
Shouldn't you know this? Should.
But you see what I'm saying, Tony? It's, it's 40, it's double.
Yes, sir, and I think, at first I thought it had to do with Title I allocations, but...
And if you look at their ESTER, at the ESTER I, the second one, the ESTER III, it's $100 million more.
Yes, sir. So again, these are estimated amounts that Raise Your Hand Texas put out, and I think, I'll have to see if I can follow up with that and see where that number is coming from.
Okay.
But the question is, are we going to get those funds? I mean, we've already come up with a plan, working with Dr. Espinoza and some of the cabinet members, where we came up with a plan and strategies for utilizing at least these two areas of funding. I also want to thank Dr. Starkey, did a great job in working with us and looking at how we can certainly allocate these funds. And so we already have a plan.
I want to make, I want to make a quick comment, Tony, right here, to Mr. Mena. If you look at his SLEDA, they're only, they almost have 20 million, so that's about half of what we have. And they're just, they're just a little bit smaller than we are.
They're right behind us, too, right?
Yeah, so there is some type of variance there.
There's a big gap there.
There's a big difference in the...
Exactly. Doesn't make any sense. In ordinary, under Title I, they get a little bit more money than we do with respect to Title I. In this case, it's a lot less.
Yes.
So it's something that I'll certainly see if I can follow up and provide some information to the board. Again, it's something that we have to certainly reach out to our legislative representatives and ask them to please work and see that, you know, we deserve these funds. It's meant for school districts, we have a plan, we can certainly utilize it. It's one thing we just, I just want to remind the board that certainly with federal funds, the use of federal funds should be for one-time expenses and non-repeating expenditures, so not to create a funding cliff. But when you're looking at these funds, I mean, you're probably looking at additional supplemental personnel, whether it be additional teachers to reduce class sizes, whether it be additional custodians to keep the buildings clean, whether it be additional counselors to provide services to students because of the learning loss, nurses and so forth. But it's important, if we do this, we have to remind ourselves and remember that this funding for the positions will go away upon the completion of the award. Now, it's my understanding that ESTER III is a three-year award. I heard that it's supposed to end in October of 2024, but I need to double check that, because I'm getting a couple of different dates. But that's what I'm understanding at this time, and things might change. So having said that, with respect to revenue estimates, right now, we're at $446.1 million in revenue for the general fund. I did make some changes to federal funds for the indirect costs as well as state sources. Now, I did have a conference call with the central appraisal districts. We did receive, I did receive the district's March preliminary values, and it was a very, very significant increase in the property values for the district. Now, I thought it was because of Amazon. They told me, no, you're probably going to get about 20% of the value of that building that's going to show up on the values for this year. The major driver is residential housing, and that's because the city of El Paso has a very short inventory of homes available for the market, about one month, and that is driving prices significantly high. So when you look at your preliminary values, you might want to double check that. Now, what they're telling me is, you know what, there's always a decrease from your preliminary values to your certified in July. So chances are, you're going to be, you're probably going to get a bigger decrease than normal, because we anticipate a lot of protests this year, especially because we're going past COVID. Last year, a lot of people were, you know, didn't have a job. Now, all of a sudden, because we weren't building homes, all of a sudden, those prices are really going up. People are paying top dollar. So obviously, that would have an effect on local revenues and state revenues, and as I get more information, I'll try to update the board as we, as we go forward with that, so to speak. But revenues will probably plateau here, and they might go a little bit higher, but I don't anticipate that much. So what's our current budget drivers for the 2122 fiscal year? Currently in our budget, we have a commensurate general pay increase of 2% for teachers, nurses, librarians, counselors, and all other job classes. We have additional secondary instructional positions due to projected growth at the campuses and dual-language program. We have additional instructional positions for the special education program, funding to increase the number of three-year-old HAFD, pre-kindergarten classes at various campuses. We have funding to provide laptops for the incoming freshman class. We do anticipate increases in property insurance and utilities and funding to purchase 10 school buses. Now, our current budget, this is what it is by functions, total currently is $456.7 million. Again, in May, once we adopt compensation, we will provide you a budget with detailed information. But as you can see, that's about $10.6 million lower than our amended budget, primarily is because we bumped up the budget for the purchase of land. Also, this year, we have $3 million or more in our budget, in the local budget for PPE. We're shifting over that to some federal funds that we have, so we're not budgeting for that next year. So again, this is a work in progress. We'll go ahead and provide you additional information as we move forward. So currently, revenue estimates, $446.1 million are general revenue, I'm sorry, expenditures are $456 billion, so right now, we have a $10.6 million budget deficit. So again, it's a work in progress. Revenues are going to change, expenditures are going to change. We can make changes to the budget, so to speak. So it's pretty much moving forward. It's a work in progress. It's not set in stone, so to speak, but we want to just give you information of where we stand right now. Things that are not in the budget, we're always reviewing vacancies to see if we have more vacancy than we need. Those are the things that we'll look at. Well, there might be some additional department requests that are not ordinary in the budget. We still have to address those. We're also going to look at the federal supplementary budget funds and see if we can develop strategies to support the budget. And just keep in mind, as we move forward, the budget will change depending on actions with respect to compensation and this legislature. So what you have here is compensation increases at various percentages. So what we have, I'm sorry. It's gone, no, actually. Anyway, what we have here, this is in our budget. So in our budget, we have 2% increase, this is the amounts for the various job families. So for total funds, it's a $6.1 million impact to all budgets. Usually, the general fund is about 93% of that, so you're looking at about $5.6 million. Now, what does that mean? That means for a teacher, nurse, librarian, it's an increase of $1,153, and starting salary would be $53,090. Okay? Now, if the board would, wants to consider a 2.5% increase as opposed to what's in the budget right now, then you're looking at an increase over the current budget of $1.5 million. That would be a general pay increase to teachers, nurses, librarians of $1,442, and starting salaries would be $53,379. And if the board's looking at a 3% increase, what would that impact be? You're looking at an additional $3 million, thank you, for, for, for the budget, as, so it would be a $1,730 increase to teachers, and the starting salary would be $53,667. Now, you'll see that this is the impact, the total amount. So what we've done is we added those numbers up here. We added those numbers up here, and then in past years, we've given them a lump sum payment. So if we look at a $500 lump sum payment, this is just, just for your information, we're looking at 6,631 employees that would be impacted. $500, that would be an additional $3.3 million. So that would certainly increase the budget by $3 million. If we go to 2.5% and use a $500 lump sum payment, that would impact the budget by $4.8 million. If we're at 3% and added a $500 payment, it's an impact of $6.3 million. So that's just for your information to consider. Gives you an idea of the impact to the budget. Now, I know there was a question about a one-time COVID payment, what would be the impact? So this is just for your information. If the board decided to give a $500 COVID relief payment of $500, the impact would be $3.3 million. And if the board wanted to do this in May, it would be a $3.3 million to the budget this year, not next year. So I know that that was requested, and so I just want to make sure that I put that bullet point to, to clarify that to the board. So it's up for the board's consideration. But again, this is for your information, just to kind of give you an idea of the impact on the budget and what you consider. Now, what we're going to do on, on April the 13th is that we're going to provide you revenue estimates, and then usually, we're going to present you our compensation proposal. It's not, it may not be this, it might be something different than what's in the budget currently. But we will recommend what we feel the board would consider on compensation. And this is just for your consideration. We're not going to ask you to take any action, you just know what we're recommending, that's all. Now, the associations may or may not present their recommendation. They might do it on 13th, or they might wait till board takes action, which would be on the 20th, the following week. So that's usually what we've done. We've always done a workshop before that, so you know what we're recommending. We let the board think about it, and then when we recommend, when we come to take action, the board knows what we're recommending, and then you can go from there. So again, the associations might present on the 13th, or they might wait until the 20th. I can't speak for them, but usually, that's what's done. We'll also give you a budget status update, and then we'll discuss the May 11th budget workshop. And that one, we will provide you a very detailed budget. We'll give you variances by line items, by functions, and by the time we know what compensation is, so usually, that number is going to be pretty steady. So are there any questions with respect to this presentation?
Yeah, I have a question here, real quick. I'm trying to figure out, I know we had COVID last year, so we didn't really do any workshops or what have you, but the year before, there was one, obviously, two years back, right?
Yes, sir.
And we were looking to approve teacher, or I should say, compensation for employees, and I believe we did it in June. Why are we doing it now in April?
No, so we didn't do it, yeah, we did do it in June.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did, I know that.
And the reason, again, the reason for that is because of the fact that of House Bill Three, we didn't know, we knew that there was legislation that said there was going to impact the salaries for nurses, librarians, and other staff. And so we had to defer, because we didn't know if we were going to recommend something that was going to be allowed by legislation. So that's why we did it back in June at that time.
So the year before that, it was basically done in April as well? I don't know.
No, it was, it was done in May.
It was done?
Yes, sir.
So the year before that was done in May?
Yes, sir.
Let's say 2019? We did it in?
June.
In June, and the year before that, we did it in May?
But we will recommend what we feel the board would consider on compensation. And this is just for your consideration. We're not going to ask you to take any action. You just know what we're recommending, that's all. Now, the associations may or may not present their recommendation. They might do it on 13th, or they might wait till the board takes action, which would be on the 20th, the following week. So that's usually what we've done. We've always done a workshop before that, so you know what we're recommending. We let the board think about it, and then when we recommend, when we come to take action, the board knows what we're recommending, and then you can go from there. So again, the associations might present on the 13th, or they might wait until the 20th. I can't speak for them, but usually, that's what's done. We'll also give you a budget status update, and then we'll discuss the May 11 budget workshop. And that one, we will provide you a very detailed budget. We'll give you variances by line items, by functions, and by the time we know what compensation is, so usually, that number is going to be pretty steady. So are there any questions with respect to this presentation?
Yeah, I have a question here, real quick. I'm trying to figure out, I know we had COVID last year, so we didn't really do any workshops or what have you. But the year before, there was one, obviously, two years back, right?
Yes, sir.
And we were looking to approve a teacher, or I should say, compensation for employees. And I believe we did it in June. Why are we doing it now in April?
No, so we didn't do it, yeah, we did do it in June.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did. I know that.
And the reason, again, the reason for that is because of the fact that of House Bill 3, we didn't know. We knew that there was legislation that said there was going to impact the salaries for nurses, librarians, and other staff. And so we had to defer, because we didn't know if we were going to recommend something that was going to be allowed by legislation. So that's why we did it back in June at that time.
So the year before that, it was basically done in April as well? I don't know.
No, it was done in May.
It was done?
Yes, sir.
So the year before that was done in May?
Yes, sir.
Let's say 2019? We did it in?
June.
In June, and the year before that, we did it in May?
Yes, sir.
And then this year, we're going to do it in April?
Yes, sir. And the reason for April is because of the fact that we've got two competing school districts.
But, I'm sorry, repeat?
We have two other districts.
Yes, sir.
Esleda and certainly El Paso, who usually present their compensation proposals in April as well as adopt them. Now, I think El Paso was going to do it in April, and they kind of pushed it off. They did, they're going to present their composition in April, but I think they're going to move that to May for actual adoption. But...
How about the other district? Do you know what they're going to do?
I think they're going to do it in April, both. They're going to present, and I think they're going to adopt.
They're going to adopt in May?
Yes, sir. No, in April.
Yeah, but you just said that El Paso may do it in May.
So El Paso, I think, two years ago, or last year, approved compensation in April. Esleda, for several years now, has been approving compensation in April. We're the only district who's done it either in May or in June.
But this year, you're saying that El Paso ISD may do it, they're going to discuss it April, they're going to probably adopt it in May. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just wanted to make for the record.
Yes, sir. So are there any other questions with respect to the compensation?
Ms. Nahara, I have another question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mena.
What is the difference if you do it in April or May? Why?
Because 85% of our budget is salaries and benefits, Mr. Mena. 85%. So I usually present a budget, and we do a lot of work on the detail, and it's based on what the administration is recommending. The last four years, what we've recommended hasn't been what the board has approved. So we're presenting budget numbers that, in reality, are not exactly correct, because it's different than what's eventually accepted. I got you. So if we can present this and get compensation done, then when we present and review the detailed budget, those numbers are pretty much set, because 85% of our budget is salaries and benefits. So I'm giving you variances that end up being totally different. And so that was the recommendation.
President Nahara, I have a question to ask.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mena.
Mr. Ressa, on the one-time payment regarding the midterm increase, you mentioned if we paid in May, that money would come out of our fiscal year for 2021, because we have money left over, or money, extra money. If we paid on the 2122, it'll affect our budget. So if the board decides to vote on that, it's best that we do it this year, correct?
So it's up to the board whether they want to decide to do a COVID relief payment out of this year's funds. And at the same time, when you adopt compensation and say, we want to do a separate amendment, where we want to do a lump sum payment for the 2122 fiscal year.